Good evening and welcome to the Norwood Zoning Board meeting of February 6, 2024. This meeting is being recorded by Norwood Community Media and also go-to-meeting. I would ask everyone at this time to silence their electronic devices. I'd like to explain the format for tonight's hearing. All parties wishing out for comments and testify matters before the board must please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. The applicant or the representative will address the board and provide evidence and testimony supporting their proposal. During that period, members of the board may ask questions during, before, or after. Following questions from the board, we will open up the meeting to anyone here in the public who would like to speak and address the matter that is before us. That would include any written comments that we've received. All comments or questions should come through the chair and not directly to any individual. Following that, the applicant will be given an opportunity to make a final statement and comment on any of the comments that they heard. And then at that point, the board will consider continuing the hearing and closing the public hearing and moving to a vote. So this evening, the first case before us is two cases, Case 23-46 and 23-47, 842 Boston Providence Highway. This is for a variance and a special permit. I'll read the public notice. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood hold a public hearing on February 6, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. on the request of Clay Subaru, Oscar, and I apologize on any names I mispresent, Lindonia. This is Case 23-46 and Case 23-47 with respect to property located at 842 Boston Providence Highway, Norwood, Mass., 02062, in the Boston Providence Highway Zoning District. This hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood. It will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. The application requests a special permit to allow installation of a variable electronic sign and a variance for the relief from Section 6.2.61B and 6.2.15, that's 15-3, to install a new pylon sign cabinet over 50 square feet in with the variable electronic portion in excess of 25% of the allowable sign area within the setback specified in 6.2.153. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood Zoning Board bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by emailing comdev@norwoodma.gov Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Is the applicant here?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you approach the podium and give us your name and address for the record, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Kathy Brown. I am the permitting coordinator at the Sign Center in Haverhill, Mass., and I'm here to present for Clay Subaru. We are requesting relief from Section 6.2.61B in order to install an electronic message sign in combination with a pylon header sign, and we are seeking relief for the square footage over 50 square feet, which is what is allowed for a standing sign in the Boston Providence Highway District. The current sign right now is an 84-inch high by 168-inch wide, three-pole pylon sign that is 98 square feet. That sign was on the former camera company's store, which was merged with the lot for 842 to make the bigger Clay Subaru lot. We are proposing to do the pylon header, which is 20 inches... Excuse me. The pylon header sign is 20 inches by 11 feet 1 inch, and the proposed electronic message center is 64 inches by 133 inches and 59.11 square feet. The reason I requested the additional square footage was to make sure that we get 100% covered for anything over 50 square feet for this standing sign.
That it?
Topography for this location is not the issue. The EMC is not going to cause anyone any particular harm, or definitely shouldn't. The allowing of the electronic message center would be in line with the other electronic message centers in the immediate vicinity of Clay Subaru, and we are looking for Clay to have the same competitive edge in marketing and advertising as is enjoyed by the other car dealerships in the immediate vicinity.
Okay. Okay. Sitting this evening are the five regular members, also sitting and will not vote but can offer any comments and ask any questions. Is Dave, is the Dora? Dave, welcome. Okay, thank you. All right, questions from the board? Al?
Yes, the neighboring enterprises that you say have the scrolling signage, can you name a couple of those?
Yes, Madden Ford is diagonally across the street from Clay Subaru, and immediately adjacent is Norwood Auto Sales and Service.
And they have a scrolling sign as well?
They have an EMC as well, sir.
We just passed through this evening.
So that is your Norwood Sales, which is directly next door to Clay. This is the Madden Ford sign. This sign is 154 square feet. This is directly across the street at the Lunchbox Deli. This sign is 150... I'm sorry, this Madden is 152. This one is 154 at Lunchbox Deli. We are proposing a sign that is 77... I'm sorry, 77.58 square feet. What we intend to do is size the sign down a little over 20 square feet so that while the sign would be nonconforming, it will be less nonconforming than the current three-pole pylon sign, which just has brand banners on it right now.
Just point of information, you're aware we're not set on precedence in this board. Okay. Al, you have the floor?
My comments related to the sign, if you notice, Taco Bell was refused, the scrolling signs, as was the liquor operation that's down there now. The person... I was on the planning board at the time, and the purpose of that, with the lack of scrolling, and I'm surprised that some of these others had gotten through, if you will, was the distraction of the highways, of the traffic flow. Those are two major intersections that we deal with, the rotary and then east-west with Dean Street, north-south with U.S. Route 1. And like I said, at the time, we were looking not to create another Route 1 in Saugus with all the flashing lights and signs for the distraction of the motorists. And that's my objection to this, and I'm not in favor of the scrolling signs.
Thank you. Rachel?
Kind of a point of information internally, because I agree with my colleague, but I'm wondering if there's a way that we can regulate the rate of change of the sign at like scrolling versus like a static sign for three minutes and then it can change after three minutes? Is that something within our purview, or is it just up or down on an electronic?
I think we can.
The bylaw only addresses the electronic, you know, moving, changing text. It doesn't kind of regulate the content. I would probably caution against doing that, at least not without checking with council first. There is... There are pretty severe limitations on municipality and restricting content. The duration of a message on a moving sign, I don't know where like constitutionally that falls in the regulation of content. It might be, you know, lumped into a dimensional kind of requirement, the same way the size of the sign might be. I would... If I were a board member, I would want to check with town council about that first.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I mean, we would definitely want to limit it so that it's like to the extent that council even says we could, just on the rate of change, regardless of what the content is, obviously. The other question, if you can just walk me through, the overall sign itself is decreasing in size.
Yes, it is.
And it is... It's changing because it's going from just the one like static billboard type sign to...
Correct.
And is the monument that it's on?
Those are actually panels to cover up the three pylon poles.
Oh, I see.
To make it look nicer and streamline it.
I see, okay.
That's all those are.
Okay. Those are my questions right now. I'm interested in...
Yeah, just a point to that from my years with the Mass DOT and the outdoor advertising. The state regulates how many times they can change on those ones in the board, so obviously we want to get council opinion on it, but I think that we could do it.
That's good context, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Shannon?
Yeah, I just had a question about sort of the casing that would go over, the three poles, and like sort of how that impacts circulation and sort of your visual ability on the lot. It looks like this is generally where cars are being parked, but you used to be able to sort of see what was on the other side of the billboard, and now we're sort of obscuring that.
It's mostly for an aesthetic.
Yep.
It's not meant to obscure, it's meant to clean up some of the visual look of three poles versus a nice, clean look to go with the EMC and the header.
And you said this wouldn't be as high as well as they existed, or you're just shrinking?
The sign height will remain...
It will, okay.
The width of the sign is going to be going down.
Got it.
And a little bit on the height. So instead of eight feet tall, it'll be seven feet tall. And... Excuse me. And then we're shrinking from 14 feet down to 11 feet 1 inch. And there's a visual difference between the existing, and you can see that the size goes down. It takes up less visual appearance when you're looking at the new sign in place as it was meant.
Okay, question, can I take?
Sure. And the reason the change is being made is because it's more of a temporary sign as they're existing currently? Okay.
Well, that's another temporary sign.
The brand banners are on... There are two Clay brand banners on the three-pole pylon and the former reader board that was also on the lot when they purchased that lot.
That sign was there when they purchased it.
And yes, so they covered them up because they were just...
Okay.
Yeah, my reference was to the company.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, yep. Nope, good question. And then I think the other questions were asked already.
Okay. Dave, have anything?
I have no questions.
Mike?
Yes?
Dan?
Oh, Dan, I'm sorry. Sorry. I got the last name right this time. Sorry, yeah, thank you. You already have five signs in that property, and in your application, you want to be successful so you can be identified like the other car dealers. The other car dealers on that side of the road are Infiniti, Lincoln, BMW, Ira, Noah Cadillac, nail of one sign. So I don't understand why... You know, we have five signs, obviously. It's been allowed.
As to the signs.
Nifnok and Fawnie, but there's a lot of signs in that property.
Yes, two of them came when they purchased the little triangular lot that used to be 858, and they just inherited those, and rather than leave them the way they are, they wanted to do the EMC sign. Mr. Lindon and Mr. Clay have indicated to me that they are willing to take down in the entirety the reader board sign to eliminate some of the signage so that that would ultimately just be four signs. Two of the signs, the pre-owned Subaru sign, which is next to the Norwood Auto Sales and Service, and the monument sign were installed via variances and special permits back in 2002, 2003, so they have a right to exist. The center Subaru sign logo sign is by right, and we are asking for the EMC on the three-pole pylon, which came with the second parcel of land. And as I said, they're willing to take down the fifth sign. That's 23 square feet, I'm sorry, 32 square feet of signage that is just going to come down and go away.
That's one. There's a lot of signs in that side thing, and I'm where, kind of where Al is, because I have a problem. Now, if you wanted to work with the planning department, the planning board, and have one sign, I could probably buy the EMC sign, but I'm not there today with all the signs that are there. The point of that sign is to change your advertising every five, 10 seconds, whatever it might be. So in my humble opinion, the other signs wouldn't be needed because that stands out a lot more than the signs that you have there now. But I'm not in a position tonight to vote for that with five still existing signs, and taking one down, to me, is still clutter, it's still sign graffiti, as I like to call it. And I could buy into one EMC sign, I think that looks nice. I worked at some of these signs along the highway, when they went from static to electronic, I was with the highway department, and there are some benefits to it. And one of the benefits if we go forward with this is what we do with the state is also allowing our local nonprofits to have an opportunity to advertise if they're having a sign-up for baseball or football or something like that.
And that is absolutely the intention for Clay. They are perfectly willing to put on...
Okay, just let me finish. Just let me finish, and just tell you where I'm at. So we're going to hear from the public and anyone else that wants to speak on that, but you know you need four votes this evening for your variance and your special permit. And I think you hear clearly that there's two members that are not going to vote for this, but if you want to withdraw and work with the plus with the planning department and have it coming back with a plan that just shows one sign, I would be receptive to that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, this time we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to address the board on this matter? Does anyone like to address the board on this matter?
There was somebody online.
Is there somebody online? Yep.
Ellie.
Ellie? Ellen Brady?
Yes.
Name and address for the record, please.
Well, it's Elmore, Brady, officially, and I live at 28 Hill Press Road, right behind Clay Subaru. And I know they said that it's going to be lower, but right now in my neighborhood, I can see the Newbury Comics sign so bright and so clear when I look out my window because it is an electronic sign. I was wondering, is this going to be another sign that is bright in my face when I look out my window?
I'll ask the applicant, as I did provide the height of the Newbury Comics sign, and ask them to provide the height of that sign, and ask them to provide the height of their proposed sign.
The proposed sign for the three-pole pylon is going to remain at somewhere between 20 and 21 feet. That will not increase in height. The reason you're probably seeing the Lunchbox Deli Newbury Comics sign is because it is so high up in the air.
Did you have the... I think you had it on there, if you could just...
Yeah, we have that on it. And it's... For me, when I hit Norwood, it's a landmark for me. I can see that sign and...
I disagree with you. So the one that is... Oh, you don't have the height on it?
No, I do not have the height on that.
You just have the height. It is significantly higher, I will agree, so...
Over 30 feet?
Yeah.
I would say.
So their sign will be the same height, but it will not be as high as the Newbury Comics sign.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
No, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to this matter before us? Okay, the applicant, would you... Yes, sir. Please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Oscar LeDonnie, I'm the general manager of Clay. I just did want to request, as far as the frequency of changing the sign, just because I drive it every day, I would not change it. It's not like the central sign where he has a set of lights, which, you know, everybody that lives in Norwood sat at that satellite in the morning. He could have five messages up in 10 minutes and everybody can see him. And I wouldn't be against it if you wanted to talk to council about, you know, having it static for a day, or, you know, once a day or what have you. I just would ask you to know that, you know, we'll know better than that. We're on a highway.
We're not speaking, they... It would be every 15 or every 20 seconds.
Yeah, that's what they said.
Yeah, yeah, so we wouldn't make it be static for one whole day.
Yeah, no, what I'm saying is I would not even do it in 15 seconds because there'll be 17 people that aren't going to see that message, you know.
Right.
We really do, you know, sometimes we're looking for technicians, you know. Once, I had a customer call us that were looking for a rental car, you know, it was $300 or whatever. We had rental cars for a lot less at the time. So I had said, damn, I wish we had that sign, you know, we could put it up because we have our loan accounts. We do a lot of events, pet adoptions. There's something every month we're raising, and that's... There's not going to be zero down, $9.9 a month. We're not going to do that. It's going to be... We would announce this meeting tonight if you, you know, to just be part of the community. So we're not looking to really make it a flashy, blinkin... There'll be good messages on there, they'll be tasteful, you know what I mean? So I know it's a big ask, but I do, you know, respect the neighbors and, you know, really do hope that you would reconsider.
No, I appreciate that. Would you consider working with our planning department about cleaning up some of it? I don't see why, when you have that electronic sign, they do stand out, they are more attractive than a static sign, and get rid of some of those other signs. Because you'd be able to... You'll see that sign coming down the highway. You don't see static signs as much, and especially some of yours. I was there today, I was the guy that pulled in front of your business there, and I looked at all the signs, and I just don't see why you would, if you get this approved, why you would need all these other signs. And I call it sign graffiti.
No, I believe it.
You know, and Al made a good point. It's something that we want to keep clean and don't want to really... We want to be Route 1, but not Route 1 North Shore.
We don't want it to be too busy. Two of our Subaru signs have... I mean, I don't even know if I can take that... There might be a franchise thing that we have to keep those two signs there. At this point, I think I'd have a whole other battle there. We do want to get rid of one of the signs. I mean, it is a... It would be down to four signs, you know, two of them do say Subaru, one of them, they're clean signs, they're nice signs. There's one that's just pre-owned vehicles, and then would have this...
See, that's my point. You'd be able to put on that sign, pre-owned vehicles, so we don't need that sign.
Yeah.
But I get what you're saying, there are franchisee agreements, I'm sure you're a franchisee with Chevrolet, but what I'm suggesting, we have to... You have to find out, can you take them down or not? We have to find out. We've got some legal counsel on what we can regulate regarding the numbers clicks, and I think you're not going to be every 15 seconds. And, you know, we'd like to... Just me now, but you heard from also Al, I don't know where he might be on this, but I would offer to you, let you withdraw without prejudice and speak with our planning department, we'll speak with council, and you speak with the Chevrolet folks and see if some of those signs can come down if you get this signed. I would think, these signs are attractive, like, you know, but we just don't want a bunch of signs, you know, than one in the middle. So that's a suggestion, if you want to move forward tonight, that is completely up to you, sir. And just a reminder, as I think your permit czar here knows, you do need four votes this evening for the variance.
And to that, we are going to request a formal withdrawal without prejudice so that we can revisit this, and we will discuss with Oscar potential solutions.
All right, appreciate that.
And while he checks with his franchise agreement to see what he must maintain and what he could let go.
Okay, great. So the board, there's been... The applicant has asked to withdraw without prejudice. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion has been made by Mary Kate. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Shannon. Al, to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
And the chairperson votes yes.
Thank you very much for your time. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I would like to...
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, sir. The next matter before us is 24-01 Shaw Street. This is for a variance and appeal of the decision of the building commissioner. I will read the public notice. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood hold a public hearing on February 6, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. on the request of Bruno Collantonio with property... With respect to property located at Shaw Street, Norwood, Mass., would be map 6, block 4, C-Lot 44, in the general residence zoning district. The hearing will be held at Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062. It will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. Pursuant to bylaw section 4.1.1, Table of Dimensional Requirements, this application requests retroactive relief in the form of a variance with respect to the height of the dwelling under construction and the surface premises, which has been constructed at 33.58 feet, where 30 feet is the required maximum building height. Additionally, the application requests an appeal pursuant to section bylaw section 10.2.3. The Board of Appeals powers other appeals relative to the decision of the building commissioner that the subject dwelling violates the front setback requirement constructed at 18.04 feet from the front lot line, where 20 feet are required by the bylaw section 4.1.1, Table of Dimensional Requirements. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood Zoning Board shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in Norwood, the office. The Northern Board of Appeals are may be requested by emailing comdev@norwoodma.gov Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is David Rung Jr., and I'm an attorney with Gilliman &amp; Cabral at 30 Wall Post Street here in Norwood. I'm here this evening representing the applicant Bruno Collantonio, who is the owner of the property at Shaw Street. It's a, until recently, a vacant lot. I think it has been assigned the address of 7 Shaw Street. It is a parcel of land having an area of 10,000 square feet total. It was recently created back in March of 2022, when the planning board approved an approval not required plan that involved trading parcels back and forth between this property and number 3 Shaw Street. Those properties were controlled by various members of the Jampa family, and so... And there were several parcels that made up the two properties, and so they rearranged the lines, created several subparcels, and we ended up with this parcel. Mr. Jampa then sold the property in December of 2022 to Mr. Collantonio, and I was involved in the Jampa side in terms of dealing with the property. I've been hired since then in December by Mr. Collantonio to help him because some issues have come up with respect to the house that's under construction. The chairman read the notice, which refers to problems with front setback and the height of the building that's under construction. Some months ago, Mr. Pelletier, the building commissioner, issued a stop work order with respect to the construction. That construction was ongoing, and the contractor was a fellow that, Vinnie Aiello, who had been involved in construction and development in the area for a number of years, Mr. Collantonio knew him, had dealt with him in the past, and he asked him to, and hired him, to build the house, and left the job to Mr. Aiello. The house was to have been completed some months ago, but last summer, the stop work order was issued. And the stop work order deals with various matters, some that have to do with whether the appropriate permits were pulled from the building department, some with respect to whether the house that's being constructed conforms to the building permit that was issued. One issue has to do with the placement of the house on the lot. It is 18.04 feet back from the street. It is 18.04 feet back from the street, where 20 feet would be required. And the other problem is the height of the building. The building conforms, would have conformed, but for the addition during construction of two dormers that were not shown on the original plans and that my clients agreed to having them put on, but were not told that that would create a zoning problem and I don't believe that was ever checked with the building department. When Mr. Pelletier, as I understand, became aware of all these things, he issued a stop work order. There are also issues with respect to the fact that electrical work was done in the house by an electrical contractor and the house was not watertight. So the electrical wiring inspector has instructed my client to have the, my client's son, who actually holds a CSL, Construction Supervisor License, and is taking over the project. He was not involved previously, but he's going to be dealing with the subcontractors. And he's been told by Mr. Sullivan that the, all the wiring has to be taken out of the house and they're going to have to start from scratch on that. So with respect to the, this has been a series of problems and my clients have, in what they've told me, they did not know that permits weren't being pulled appropriately, that people's names were on the application as a construction supervisor and I believe as a plumbing contractor who were not really involved with the project. But the big, the big issue, and Mr. Pelletier is perfectly correct, I think, to have said stop work, you've got a zoning problem here, let's not make it worse. You've got electrical issues, a wire inspector is flagged. The issue with the setback, I believe, can be resolved because our bylaw has a provision, section 4.1.2.2, allows the setback averaging. Essentially what that means is that, it says, no building shall be required to be set back from the street any more than the average of the two properties, the two houses on either side. In this case, the house at number three Shaw Street is 11 and a half feet back from the street. The house on the other side is about 35 feet back, but the, the section I just referred to states that the, when a house is set back further than the setback requirement, you use the setback requirement. So if you take 20 feet to the house, to the left of this house, and 11 and a half feet for the house at number three Shaw Street, average them, well, add them together, you get 31.5, half of that is 15.75.
Just to interrupt you.
Yeah.
Did you say the house, one house was 35 feet?
It's 35, but you used 20 feet. The, the bylaw says that a house that exceeds that limit, you treat it as if it is at whatever the setback requirement would be. So even though it's set back about 35 feet, we use 20 feet, which was, is the setback requirement. So you take the 20, the 11 and a half, add them together, divide by two, you get 15.75. With setback averaging, the house would conform at 18.04 feet.
Can I ask you one more question, Mr. Hearn? Don't you have to declare that when you pull the building permit?
Just what I was going to get to.
Okay.
Exactly. We don't dispute the fact that the builder in the application did not call out that the house would be 18, just a little more than 18 feet back from the street. I think, some of the paperwork says 24 feet back. And so that's, that's an issue that is a building permit issue and there's no question, the house as on the lot right now is in violation of the building permit. Now, we've had discussions with Mr. Pelletier, I met with him, with my client, Mr. Bruno Collantonio, his wife, Mrs. Laura Collantonio, and their son Frank, who holds a CSL. We met with Mr. Pelletier back in December to explore how we could resolve these problems. And Frank said he was going to take over under his license, yet the subcontractors didn't get it done right. Mr. Pelletier has allowed some work to go on to try to tighten up the house, to weatherproof it, but beyond that, we're kind of a standstill. We need to remedy or resolve the issue of the setback on the building permit. We'd have to revise the building permit, amend it, whatever administratively has to be done to make it match what's actually on the ground. And then I think setback averaging steps in and says, that issue is dealt with. The other issue about the height of the building comes about because of the addition of the dormers. If there were no dormers on the house as originally proposed and I think as originally permitted with the building department, with no dormers, there wouldn't be a problem. Because of the way the, the measurement is, is made, on the, the center line on each side and the center line on each front and back. The, I don't think we would have a problem on that and, and the house as originally proposed was, I think would have complied. Part of the problem also, I think, is that the foundation is out of the ground or set up higher than may have been originally planned. Don't know how that came about. We have a sloping lot here and in the back, the measurement is even higher because you've got essentially a walkout basement now. So these are the two problems. They came about not by any action on the part of my client, but because of the way the house was being built and from their point of view, as they've told me, they did not know that there were problems, they did not know there were violations. I'm not even sure they knew that there was a stop work order until sometime after that it occurred. So they're trying to fix it, they're trying to get this house built. We are working with Mr. Pelletier, but we've got some issues that we think only this board can resolve in terms of zoning violations and as, as the notice says, we're looking for retroactive relief. Normally people come to before they built. When my client proposed to build, it was, it was no zoning violation as property, as the project was planned. The violations occurred in the course of construction. He's responsible for it as the owner of the property, but he's not responsible for it in a way that he didn't do it and he was not kept abreast of what was going on. So we're asking for, if, if the board doesn't think it can over, overrule the building inspector because, on the setback averaging, because of the fact that the permit says something different, I would ask that on that, you give us relief conditioned upon the building permit being put into proper content and form to Mr. Pelletier's satisfaction. I don't know the exact details, but I think he's on this meeting tonight for various reasons and he might be able to comment on that.
We're going to hear from him next.
I expect you will. With respect to the, the dormers that exceed, that lead to the building being higher than would be allowed under the height restrictions in our bylaw, the, I would ask on that, that the, that you look at the hardship that is resulting. By the way, the dormer does not go up quite as high, it's a little bit shorter than the peak of the house itself. So it's, it's not higher, neither, neither dormer on either side, neither one is higher than the actual peak that exists in the, in the construction. But when you start measuring the side walls, instead of going up to the eaves, you're now going all the way up to the peak of that dormer that is set on each side, that's what threw it off. So we would ask for relief on that, looking at the fact that we have a slope lot which contributes to the height to some extent and also the hardship that comes from having to remove dormers on a, on a house where the roof is finished and the, you know, to, they've already got enough hardship, not exactly related to zoning, but to have to remove all the electrical, they've got an estimate of over $30,000 to, not to remove it, to replace it. That doesn't mean take the cost, I think they're going to have to remove it themselves or Frank will have to do that. So that's the situation we're in. It is not a pretty situation at all, it's not a situation of their making, but as the owner of the property, Mr. Collantonio, is the one who's got to deal with it and deal with you folks. We have a lot with slopes, which contributes to the height issue. We have a, we have a hardship with respect to the cost of remedying a problem that they didn't really make, it was done without their knowledge. Well, they knew that, they agreed with the dormers, but they didn't, they weren't told, oh, by the way, that's going to create a zoning problem. Nobody would agree to that, they would have gone, and I don't think it was ever submitted to the building inspector either because he would have flagged it as violating. So they're stuck with stuff that was going on that they weren't told about. So I think there is hardship there. To allow this relief, I don't think would derogate from the intent of the bylaw. Plenty of houses that are above that height scattered around town, within this district and elsewhere. And I don't see where it would create any harm to the public good or to the neighborhood, but we leave it to you and my clients here, son Frank is here to answer questions, and I'm sure you've got others that will want to weigh in on it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hearn. If it's all right with the members of the board, I'd like to hear from the building commissioner.
Gary, thank you for joining us tonight. Gary, this is Gary Pelletier, our building commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Good evening to you and board and attorney Hearn and Collantonio. Mr. Hearn, attorney Hearn gave a, a very thorough and accurate summary of the events that led up to this. Just confirming that the building was originally permitted with outside gables. Building height was evaluated as part of the permitting process with hip roof on right, right and left side of the building. Building did meet the 30-foot average height. Building was permitted to be compliant with the dimensional setbacks for the district. The, the stop work order was issued initially because there was electrical work, plumbing work and HVAC work being done in our house without any permits. The dormers were added without an amendment to the permit and approval by my office, so another reason for stop work order. Upon requesting an as-built from the prior general contractor, we actually got several, I think as many as three, different as-bills before we got to the, the one that was accurate, which showed that the building not permitted, I'm sorry, was not placed on the lot as permitted and in fact was, in fact, in violation of the 20-foot required setback for the district. All of this, as, as attorney Hearn alluded to, is really not of any fault or malice by the, the property owners, I present the responsibility and fault of the contractor who was building the house. I did meet with the owners and attorney Hearn and we did discuss the height issue at length, which other than removing the dormers, would require relief from the board. As far as the setback issue, attorney Hearn, I did discuss setback averaging, I have read the, the bylaw section. I also consulted with Mark Schubert, who is my predecessor, who many of you may know and who has permitted a lot of, awful lot of buildings in down in Norwood over his 32-year tenure, as well as town council. Neither Mark nor attorney DeLuca had any recollection of this provision of setback averaging being used for new construction or for permitting. So it would have been, in my opinion, something that should have been presented to the board prior to construction, obviously in this case it was not. Having no precedent to review and apply, it's my decision to refer this to the board for determination. Any, any questions on my comments up to this point?
Are there any questions for the building commissioner, for any of the members?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Al.
Yes. Mr. Pelletier, with the 18.5 foot setback, did that add any additional square footage to the house from the original set of plans?
It did not. It was, it was simply placed improperly. It's, it's my understanding that the, the builder did not have the foundation state prior to placement, which would have ensured that it was placed appropriately.
So it would show that it wasn't an intent to enlarge the size of the house, it's just the misplacement.
No, it's just, just put in the wrong place.
Thank you.
Al?
Yeah.
Any other members have any questions for the building inspector or the building commissioner? Okay, Gary.
Okay. I can respond on one point.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Pelletier and I have discussed that section of the bylaw and I appreciate that in his conversations with Mr. Schubert and Mr. DeLuca, both of whom I've known a long time and have great respect for, that they don't recall seeing those circumstances. But that language is in the bylaw for a reason and it's in the dimensional regulations part of the zoning bylaws. It is one of those provisions that effectively varies what the, or clarifies what the dimensional regulations say. No building need provide a front setback larger than the average of the front setback on lots of, but on either side. I can read the rest of it, but that's the point. No building need provide a front setback. If the application had come in with 18.04 feet as a setback, a reference to section 4.1.2.2, in my view, would have resolved the matter without having to involve the board. It's not a variance from the dimensional requirements, it's a variation of the dimensional requirements because you look at the section 4.1 requirements, say, oh, you've got to be 20 feet back. Then you go and look at the other provisions that allow for, you know, how you, for example, corner and through lots, what are those? It tells you how you deal with corner lots and through lots. And then you get the setback averaging. Here's what you do when you've got a neighborhood where the lots, the houses are on different setbacks. It doesn't make sense if these houses are 10 feet off the, the street, as they are in some of the older neighborhoods, that somebody's got to go back 20 feet or 30 feet, depending upon what district they're in. That is in there for a reason and it's part of the legislation, the bylaw, and it has to be read in a way that makes sense. I realize it's an unusual thing, but I think that it provides relief, at least from the setback, provided we straighten out the permit and have a permit that matches that location of it. So I would ask you to consider that, there's no point to having that language. It doesn't require a variance, there's no point to having that language if it didn't provide what I'm suggesting to you it's supposed to be doing and that it is doing with respect to this lot. Thank you.
That point, Mr. Hearn, that language is when you file your permit, not after the fact, and I think you lose your right. I think you lose your right when you do that.
I don't know, you lose your right.
Well, there's case law on it, I'm sure you'll find it. There's case law on it and I'm sure you'll find it.
Well, that's why we're asking for relief on that. And if the board doesn't see it that way, we've also requested it as variance relief with respect to that. But I think that if, if somebody had come in with a permit request on that and the question came up, I would have pointed to that section and say, this tells you, the mistake was made not by my client, the mistake was made, and Mr. Pelletier and I were in agreement on all this, by the contractor doing, not doing the job in as careful a way as it should have been done. But I think you've got the authority to grant some relief on that, under that section. And we need to make the paperwork in the building department match what's going on on the ground, consistent with any relief that you might grant. But, you know, no building need do this and, and that, that means something and that's what town meeting voted many years ago. So I would ask to do that. But these folks that come in with a huge mea culpa, except that it really isn't their fault.
They have to take some responsibility.
Okay. They can take the responsibility.
Let's hear from the members. Al, anything to the applicant?
The, the contractor for the owner, was he a licensed builder?
Gary, I'll, I know the answer, but I'll let you answer that if you don't mind, Gary.
Mr. Aiello was the general contractor and he had provided initially a construction supervisor. supervisor that was alleged to work for him. However, that contractor notified me shortly around the same time that he was actually not supervising the project and didn't agree to use his license on the build, another reason for the stop work order.
Thank you.
Eddie Ockham? Rachel, anything for the applicant or the building commissioner?
Thank you for the presentation. It gives really helpful context. I mean, it's a little bit of a quandary, because I think the appropriate relief is against whoever built the building, did the plans, didn't conform, and I don't know how the relief is coming to the board for violation of the town bylaws, and I'm very concerned about not building to plan, because what does the board and the building enforcement have to go on other than the expectation that the plans are met? So, I think we're all agreement on that, but how do we proceed with enforcement of the zoning bylaws? So, I mean, I'm following what you're saying about the setback averaging. One thing that I see in the plans is that you identified 11.5 feet for the existing structure of number three. The plan that I have, it just shows the one corner, which appears to be closest. What is the setback of the farthest corner, so that we can get the average distance? Because I think that provision relieves to the average front setback, not the closest.
I will say this. It says the average of the front setbacks on lots. So, when we look at setback, we're looking at what's the nearest point of the structure to the street.
Yeah.
So, 11.5 at number three Shaw, 18.04 for number seven Shaw.
Yeah, I see that reading.
And number, whatever the next number up is, that's setback of 35 feet. So, we use the 20-foot setback to do the calculation. So, it's, what's setback? We don't average setback when we're trying to figure out how to place a house. What is the closest
Yeah.
of the point of that house or structure, any kind of structure, to the street?
Yeah, I see that reading. I think that clarification is correct in my reading as well. I'm just having a hard time because it's not built to plan. The other question I have is about the height, because we would certainly, like even assuming that this is applicable for the setback, we have to deal with the variance on the height. And driving through that area, I'm not seeing anything that's peculiar about this lot that would warrant a variance. You noted that there's a sloping downgrade in the back, but that did not strike me as unusual for this particular lot as opposed to the rest of the district.
I think it exacerbates the height issue, that it goes down so far that you've got a walkout basement. And so, your measurement in the back is that much higher, because you're measuring from the average grade in the center to that peak. If it weren't, if the lot were flatter, the measurements might still miss because of the dormer. But I think, as Mr. Pelletier said, as proposed, the house satisfied the height limitations.
Yeah, it's the as-built.
It's the dormers that threw it off. We're trying to save the dormers because of the cost of having to remove them, fix the roof, fix the framing and all that. If we could get relief on that. I understand wanting to enforce the zoning bylaws, the rules and requirements of the building department. We didn't do it. That's the problem. If my guy were the builder, I wouldn't be here.
Yeah. I see what you're saying. I guess I just have to fall back on, you know, where is the appropriate form of relief? And, you know, as realistic or unrealistic as it may be, the appropriate relief would be against the person who put the building here, because the plans were written in a way that made the house buildable. It was buildable to code, perfectly usable, you know, there was no
No violation of any dimensional requirement.
Yeah, no violation, and it would have been put into full economic use. So, I don't think you can claim a financial hardship there. It's just the financial hardship of correcting someone else's breach of contract, I assume.
I guess, but, you know.
Yeah.
The ability to chase people and collect is very
I hear that.
Nebulous, to put it one way. I mean, whether we'll ever be able to collect a dime for this is a separate matter that doesn't really concern you folks, but we're having this discussion about that. We're looking to you because you folks have the authority to give relief from the strictures of the bylaw. On the first point, the setback, I do think that that's an easier question. An accident occurred, a mistake was made, and however that happened, we're talking a foundation. Can't make the street narrow, so we've got to move the lot deeper. We're going to have to move the whole house. That's a little, you know, for less than two feet of setback problem, and considering how that neighborhood is laid out, that's why 4.2.2.2, if I've got it right, 4.1.2.2. That's why it exists. You don't have to put your house back any farther than the average of your neighbors. Otherwise, some people would be in a little tunnel, because they're following the current rules, and everybody got the house built ahead of time, got to build, for whatever reason, built up closer. So, I think on the first point about the averaging, the setback averaging, I think there's a way here that doesn't offend, but follows the bylaw, provided with a condition, perhaps, that we resolve things with the building department. With the other one, I understand it's a more difficult question, but it is, the fact is, it's a problem after the fact, and it creates significant hardship. The enforcement of that height limitation does create a hardship for my client. It would have been better if somebody had thought of it before they put the shovel in the ground. So, that's where we are.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chen.
Yeah, I think I'm in a similar place as Ms. Churchill, especially around the hardship associated with, like, the variance threshold. I mean, the hardship is that the building was not unfortunately constructed to what was permitted. The hardship is not actually associated with trying to build a structure on the shaped soil topography that we have available, as you had brought up with the fact that there was able to be permitted, like, a perfectly usable and buildable structure. So, that is very challenging, and I very much feel for the applicant, but I do think that that's not something relating to, like, a zoning bylaw provision. And I don't have any other questions. I think that that could be taken as potentially a separate item than the front setback. However, that is in a similar situation that also could have been built to and was permitted, actually even further back than what was required. So, yeah, no other questions.
But I think, Mr. Chairman, in response to that, if an applicant had come in with a proposed house that said it was 18 feet back, "Oh, wait a minute, can't do that, 20 feet. Oh, no, look at 4.1.2.2. That allows this." So, we're saying, we're kind of looking for retroactive allowance of what would have been allowed under the bylaw in an initial application.
And would that be allowed through special permit, or would that be allowed through?
No.
It's just allowed by right.
Yeah, no.
So, it wouldn't have come before us actually at all, is what we're saying.
It wouldn't have to come before this board for that. That's simply applying this zoning bylaw to, you know, that provision of the zoning bylaw to the facts. Unfortunately, it's being done in reverse, but I think you can do it, that part of it. So, the other issue is more like, the issue of the dormers is more of a financial hardship.
Mary Kate?
Sure, let me see. It was just, it was an error of the builder that led to the varied location of the structure. There's nothing that caused it to be the different location than according to the plans.
No, the plan said one thing, he did something else. We think an error. Mr. Pelletier said something about it wasn't properly stated when the foundation went in, and that can cause an error as to where things go. But, again, we didn't know anything about it. And that's why I looked at it, I looked at the section, and I thought, well, at least that part, I think, is solvable. The dormers are a different issue, not so easily solved.
No other questions?
Dan, do you have anything?
Uh, no.
Gary, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, just two things. One, as far as, you know, the question of this matter not coming before the board had it been presented at permitting, I would have denied it and sent it to the board, because there's nothing in the dimensional table as far as a footnote that would tell me that this could be applied on a new construction home on a new lot. And again, as I mentioned earlier, I had no precedent to go by, no example of this being applied on new construction. We have a dimensional table broken out in very, in great detail with a lot of footnotes. And so, I would have done the exact same thing that I did here, which would be to refer it to the board for consideration. It's not that I don't agree with it or not that I think that it's not maybe applicable here. It may be that's really for the board, in my opinion, to determine, and I think it's a case-by-case basis, because it may apply, it may be more relevant in certain neighborhoods. As far as the height issue, again, if that had been brought to me ahead of time as an amendment, I would have denied it, because it's a clear violation. There would have been, when this building was originally permitted, it was a pull-down attic. It was attic for storage. It then also became, all of a sudden, became a walk-up attic with dormers, which would lead to it being utilized, whether permitted or unpermitted, as potentially living space. So, I think that's a real issue for the board to consider, as well as the overall height, is what do we need all these dormers for in an attic that's not going to be permitted to be used as living space?
Thank you, Gary. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, yeah?
Yeah, just hold on one more. Sarah, the planning had provided us a review comment. Rather than read it, do you want to comment on it, or do you have any, anything you want to comment on this, other than, I'll ask all the members if they've read it.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I think the major point that I made to you in the memo was in reviewing the determination, or indetermination that was provided by the building commissioner. Mr. Pelletier cited Section 10.1.2 on conformity, and in his initial determination that was issued in December, he said the building as constructed was a violation of that section because it wasn't built according to plan. I do think that's significant when you're considering whether or not relief is appropriate. Beyond that, I would just encourage you to kind of structure your findings and your comments on these as though they were two separate applications, kind of going forward.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's how we'll take it. Thank you, Sarah. David, go ahead.
Yeah. With respect to Mr. Pelletier's comment about there being a staircase to the attic as opposed to a pull-down, and I know a lot of houses are built nowadays with pull-downs, but, you know, I have a house that has a stairway behind a door off a bedroom, but a regular stairway to the third floor. And in order to use it for habitable space, this house we're talking about at Shaw Street, if they wanted to do it, they'd probably have to check the framing, and Mr. Pelletier would have to approve the framing, because the framing, and Frank Coltoni knows this too, the framing for an attic, as I understand, is different from the framing if you were going to turn it into habitable space. But there's nothing that prohibits putting a stairway versus a pull-down, nothing that prohibits putting windows in an attic or dormer, except for the fact that it violated the height. So, I would disagree with the interpretation that just because somebody puts that type of access to their attic and means they're going to sneak in more living space. Frankly, they're allowed to use their attic.
That's really not the manable for us, right? I think Mr. Pelletier is probably concerned about this unlicensed contractor that you had doing things there.
We agree.
And he certainly has a concern, to your point, wasn't built correctly.
We agree.
But thank you. That's not before, that's not, yes, thank you. Okay. At this point, we'll open the meeting up first to anyone that's here, present, and then we'll go to go-to meeting. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board on this matter? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Russo. I live at 13 Shaw Street. I've got the new house. First, let me start by saying I have no problem with the frontage short of two feet, unless it changes the water table. In the past, my husband and I have spent over $1,000 with three dry basements in NewEnglandBasement.com fixing the water from coming in our basement on the side where this house is being built. And we have had no problems since the '90s until this past January storm, when the water came in, only on the side where the house is being built. I have photos in my phone for proof. From a rumor I've heard, there are no French drains on either side of this new house. That has to change. I am disappointed that this house's height is over the maximum bylaw and dormers not on the original plan submitted for the permission to build. These dormers should be taken down, as told to me by the building inspector's office, within a few weeks in January, and have not done so. It appears to be someone is breaking the laws in order to make more money. This whole process has been very sad to watch and remains undone since July 2023. Thank you for your time to listen to me.
Thank you, Ms. Russo. Thank you. Is there anyone else here, present, that would like to address the board on this matter? Name and address for the record, sir.
Tom Jamper, I live at 3 Shaw Street. And it's a matter of expediency. I'd like to see this project just move along as it needs to be, whatever is deemed necessary. But I'd like to see this project move along. I'm tired of looking in an eyesore. I'm tired of my mud leaching down, losing loom. So, I'd like these folks to be able to finish this project, whatever that takes. Let's get it done. I don't know if any of you live next to a home or new construction. It's not fun, but it needs to be done. So, we sold the land to these folks. They're trying to build it. I'd like to see it move along. Okay? This is, it's getting old. And this stoppage, for whatever reason, I don't know, but it seems overly burdensome. And from my perspective as a neighbor, and as Ms. Russo mentioned, there are other side effects of this not being done. So, I'd like to see this move along, if you could all think to do that. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here, present, that would like to address the board to this matter? Okay. Is there anyone at go-to meeting that would like to address this matter? Please state your name and address for the record and proceed. Is there anyone here on go-to meeting?
Go-to meeting, maybe they don't have a go-to meeting.
Go-to meeting. Anyone here? Okay. Let it be known, we have pronounced that twice. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just want a response.
I always give you a chance. I'm going to give you your last chance, right? It's your turn now, Mr. Hearn. Go ahead.
Yeah, just on the French drain, French drain that Ms. Russo mentioned.
Yeah.
My clients understand they were being put in by the prior contractor. We haven't dug down to look for them, but those were going in before the stop work order. So, we understand, you know, the value of those.
There's no gutters there, right? I didn't see any gutters.
On the roof?
No. So, that, okay. All right, thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have one question on
Go ahead.
10-1-2.
Yeah.
That's the building to conformity.
Yeah.
What is really the relief there? So, hypothetically, what if there was a variation in the building plan that did not require zoning relief, but it was still not built to the plan that, uh, did not require zoning relief, but it was still not built to the originally approved plan? What is the relief there? Is it just the, the relief on 10-1-7 for the penalty?
Yeah, um, well, the relief is stop, have it take it down, but that's a good question. What if this was built to conformity? I, I guess I'll pose this to you, Gary. Let, let's say this was not built to plan, but it met all of the zoning requirements and didn't need any variance. Uh, what, what would it just be a, and I think the question rates last one, would it just be a penalty and, uh, 10.1.7?
Well, from a zoning standpoint, yeah, it would, uh, the order would be for them to amend the permit in accordance with the State Building Code, which requires in Chapter 1, um, number one, for the, for the building to be built, uh, in accordance with the approved plans. And any change to that has to be filed as an amendment. That amendment needs to be approved by the building official. So certainly no certificate of occupancy would be issued until the, the building, uh, and the plans that are approved or amended match. Violations of the State Building Code are, there's a penalty of a thousand dollars a day for that violation. The conformity issue would also be a violation because our bylaw requires, um, that also that the building be built in compliance, uh, with the approved plan. So that, that would simply be the penalty. Uh, it, it could be corrected, obviously, administratively, um, and the, you know, the, the end result and the intention is, is that the building comply with the plans.
And you're the only one that can assign that fine. The board doesn't do that. That's on you, correct, Gary?
Ultimately, it's at my discretion as the enforcement officer to, you know, uh, spike the requirement and then impose fines if it is appropriate.
Okay. Is that helpful?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Um, Rachel, Al?
I have nothing for us.
Yeah?
No other questions now? Nothing right now?
Okay.
Nothing.
Yeah, no one wants to jump into this pool. Okay, um, let's, Sarah, do you have anything? Nope. Let's take what I think is the easiest of what's before us, and that would be the 4.1.2.2 setback averaging. And that is, the special permit, is that, that's the special permit, right? That, is that the variance?
So that's an appeal.
That's an appeal?
Yeah, so, so the building commissioner made a determination.
Right.
That it was constructed and it did not comply with that.
So that's an appeal.
That front setback requirement, and the appeal was that specific determination that it doesn't comply.
Okay.
Um, you can overturn.
Right.
Or uphold.
Hold it, yeah.
The building commissioner's decision. That's, those are your choices there.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
But that seems to be the easiest one right now, so, um.
I think.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think on, I think that becomes more appealing if it was the case that both homes on either side of it, if you were being put in that scenario where you had this like tunnel or alleyway that you had to walk down to access the new structure, but because you're not having that situation on one side of the home and it's, you know, brand-new construction on a newly-made lot, I feel like that the purpose for it being there is less, it's, it's less compelling, given that we would have to be appealing something that has already been decided as opposed to it just happening by right.
Is there some other comments on that?
I mean, I would just say, driving by, it does seem closer, just subjectively, it's closer, but I take note of the reading here, and I do think it's applicable. The problem is it wasn't planned that way. That's not how it was approved. So notwithstanding that we could approve, you know, say, a new plan with that setback provision, um, I think the conformity requirement would still apply, but looking discreetly at the question of whether we could approve a plan that had, um, that met the setback averaging provision, I think that would make sense on that discrete question.
Yeah. Al?
On the setback, I, I don't have a real issue with that, only because as to my question of was there any gain in the square footage on the housing, it wasn't for purposes of, shall we say, uh, getting more from what we're looking for, other than it was just a screw-up by the contractor who was incompetent to begin with. So.
Thank you, Al. Um, on the matter of the setback averaging, Katie, any comments?
Uh, no comments right now. No, I understand what others have said.
No comments.
May I, I'm sorry, may I ask the building commissioner? So if this plan had come in at the 18 feet, it sounded like that would be something that you would have, you would not have just permitted that by right? Is that inaccurate? If that had come in and it was showing the 18 feet, would you have permitted that, Mr. Building Commissioner?
Uh, no, as I said, I, again, I, I looked at it that it, it wasn't an easy, clear-cut yes. Uh, it, I had no, I, I certainly would have consulted with town council and my predecessor, as I did in this case, and finding no precedent to lean on, I, I would have deferred it to the board for consideration. Not, not disagreeing with it, but, uh, not feeling 100% that that was a compliant pathway for permitting.
So that likely would have come through anyways. Okay.
Uh, I would have, I would have, it would have ended up right where it is right now, uh, for consideration. And I'm, again, I'm not opposed to it, but I, I have a difficulty with it from the perspective of a brand-new home on a newly permitted lot. Um, why do you need to employ this section of the bylaw when it's not addressed in the dimensional table? So again, I, I, I think it is, uh, it would be appropriate for the board to consider it in this instance for relief. Um, and I, I would be supportive of that. I, I, again, I, I couldn't, I did not feel like I had 100% pathway to yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think if the structure wasn't there and this came before us, I think the answer would have been no, if I can make that comment. But the structure there makes this a lot more difficult before us. Um, just procedurally, they haven't closed the public hearing yet.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna want, I'd like an opportunity, while the hearing's open, to speak to these matters.
Mr. Herr, if I ever not denied you an opportunity to speak.
I just don't want a quick motion to close the hearing. It'd surprise us all.
I know, that's why I'm, I, I wanna make sure that I don't do that, because this is difficult. It's difficult for all of the members here. I understand that although the owners have some responsibility in some of these things, I do understand the situation that's before us and before them, and trying to find a, a pathway, uh, on that. But that being said, um, if we were to take the one vote on the averaging, and then if it didn't look like it was going the way the applicant wanted and we didn't close the public hearing, they could withdraw on that portion. Did, is that, that's how, do you see that the way I see that, or is there a different procedure, Sarah?
So you're suggesting that a request for, I wouldn't close the public hearing until you're.
Right, but we, we.
You've done deliberating and you no longer wish to receive any comment from, um, the public, from Mr. Pelletier or the applicant's counsel?
So if we took a vote on the averaging, we can leave the public hearing. We don't have to close the public hearing to take that vote, right?
I would hold your votes until the end.
Okay, okay, all righty.
Just.
Okay.
To allow for opportunity to.
Okay. That's what I wanted to, yeah.
Certainly, you know, deliberating is.
Yeah, no, um, okay, now we'll get the hard one.
Well, I guess, and.
Yeah.
The, the other question too is whether that approval would apply retroactively, leaving it in the discretion of the building commissioner, whether and to what extent to impose any penalties for non-conformity and leave that enforcement piece to his discretion?
Yeah, if we were to say that we'll accept this setback averaging and allow this under the thing, then the building inspector will make his determination. Well, he would have to file, I, I, as you said, we can either do it through a variance and you file a whole new plan, or we just overrule the building inspector's decision and that, that becomes, uh, legal, if you will. And then it's up to the building inspector regarding the fines. I don't, and I don't know if there's been any fines yet, but, but that's, for another, for another day, yeah. Um, okay. Okay, now we get to the, the more difficult. Uh, I wanted to ask you, Mr. Herr, in the packet, I did not see a topography report, and I do, did notice it does drop off significantly in the back, but was there a survey done that included the topography?
I don't believe so.
No.
Uh, the only survey that I'm really relying on is Mr. Gloss's, uh, December 7th or thereabouts.
Right.
I, I, I accept his measurements and I'm more comfortable.
Right, no, I'm not, I'm looking for.
But that was just on setback.
If you're asking us to do something here that you know is very hard to do, a variance, and it's after the fact, which even makes it harder, and we have to find all of the reasons that are required, and hearing from some of the board's numbers, which we'll hear from them again here now, see, see where we are.
If I may.
Yeah.
Whether Frank Coltoni has any sense of what the elevation is between the front of the lot and the rear?
Just if you could, name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name's Frank Coltoni.
Address.
I don't live in Norwood.
Just your address, wherever it is.
Uh, 127 Frontier Drive, and that's Pellon, New Hampshire.
Thank you, sir.
Um, the, the difference in grade from the front to the rear is about three foot six.
Three foot six. Thank you, sir. Okay, um, just trying to get a sense on now where we are with the dormers, and that the dormers, from what we're told, forced it to go above the 30-foot requirement. And Gary, can I just ask you this question? If the dormers were to be removed, then it, then the, then the building meets the, uh, is under 30 feet, if the dormers are removed?
Yeah, well, I mean, obviously, we'd probably need a little more work on finish grade, but yes.
Okay. All right, Al, we're discussing the, uh, the dormers and granting a variance for, uh, was it three, three feet? Yeah, three, three and some inches.
And some change.
And some change, yeah. And some change. Do you have any comment or any, uh?
I don't like it. Don't like them remaining, to be honest with you. But they're there and it's finished. And I feel that the homeowner here, well, actually, it's just, it, they're not gonna move into this. This is just a real estate flip for them, I think, right?
I, I believe so, but I, that doesn't really weigh into, uh, decision-making on it. But I believe you're correct.
I think they should be removed, the dormers.
I think they should be removed.
To be in compliance with the original plan that was filed and accepted.
Rachel?
I, I mean, looking at the requirements of the variance, I just don't think that they're met. Um, and while it makes it more difficult to stick to what the zoning requirements are, given this back pattern, I, that doesn't weigh in on whether a variance is appropriate here, and I don't think the conditions have been met for that. I'm in a, I'm in a, unfortunately, a similar place, yeah.
Okay. Mary-Kate?
I agree. I did very difficult getting to meet the dimensions of the variance.
Dan?
I just sort of agree with what we're discussing.
Hi, Mr. Herr. Do you want to approach us and?
I just, um, I don't think it looks so good for the dormers, uh, Mr. Chairman.
I, I, I agree with you.
I, I do think, uh, Ms. Dixon's suggestion that you take these as two separate matters makes sense because they are based on two different things. Um, I don't want to keep arguing with Mr. Pelletier about dimension and all that. I think we all agree that we got a prob, we have a problem here. And if the dormer, if the request for variance on the dormers, uh, we can read handwriting on the wall and notes, and I think that, um, the theory that we always want to live and fight another day, we, um, can see what's happening at this battle today and that, that perhaps, uh, the board would grant leave to withdraw without prejudice on that. We still have to deal with Mr. Pelletier. It doesn't solve the problem, but at least we don't have the, a negative decision against us. Um, and it might, we might find some other way to deal with these things. And, and we all agree, there's a third party out there, it's not part of the case, that we believe to be a big part of the problem. But that's a battle that my clients have to decide on. You don't have to be part of that. I would ask with respect to the setback, it is in the dimensional requirements, section 4.0. It is in there for a reason. And in terms of the equity of the situation, to require somebody to move a house when there is that provision there, that, I, I guess one way to ask and look at it is to say, it seems to me that part of what's stopping people from maybe proving that setback is that this is being done backwards. That if somebody had come in at the beginning and said, "I want to build a house there," uh, and, and Mr. Pelletier might have said, "Well, I'm, I can't agree with that. You better go to the board," we wouldn't be starting in, with a black mark of having somebody on our behalf having violated all the permits that were issued, and it might have made it easier. Um, but I do think that's there for a reason, and, um, and it, and it, I would say normally shouldn't have to go, and I appreciate that there isn't precedent that anybody can remember on it. Um, but I would ask that, uh, on the, on the variance for the dormers, I think it's prudent to request to withdraw without leave on the, um, matter of the setback averaging. Um, I would ask that you, uh, grant us relief on that conditioned upon the appropriate plans and permit amendments being filed with Mr. Pelletier. Um, and if for some reason he doesn't give it, uh, give it to us, then we've got a different case with him, you know, that might bring us back here, I don't know, but at least get us back to him. We want to fix that. There are administrative issues here. There are legal issues here. We can't even begin to fix them unless we can go back and deal with the location of the house on that lot. It's an accident, not my client's fault, but they're the ones who are bearing enough of a problem just to remove a dormer if they have to do that, just to deal with windows that they've got, you know, and remove all the electric, the electric, uh, wiring and all that. Uh, I'd ask for your consideration on the setback. To agree, to overrule him in this point, subject to the condition that we resolve the paperwork with him. Because I, we agree, there shouldn't be something built that doesn't match the paperwork in his office. He needs that. He's entitled to that, and we have to do that. We came to begin to do that. Thank you very much.
So here's, here's what I think you're saying, and here's what I'm gonna say. We'll take a vote to allow you to withdraw without prejudice of the variance on the dormers. And then, you know I don't do straw votes, so what I will do on the other matter, I will ask the members to make their comments, so then you can have an idea on where that will go. Is that fair enough, Mr. Herr?
That's fair.
Okay.
I guess, question on, two questions. Um, with respect to the setback, is your proposal that we direct the, um, zoning enforcement officer to approve plans pursuant to that 4.1.2, allowing the setback averaging for a new plan, showing the as-built footprint to approve that plan? Is that?
I, I don't know that I'm asking you to direct him to approve a plan, but more to overrule the determination that that section doesn't apply to the situation. And then let us go in and explain where we think he can sign off if we give him the right plans.
Okay, thanks.
So overall, on the question of whether that even applies to this situation.
And if that does go that way, we'll, we'll condition it that you present a plan that shows accurately where the structure is from a certified.
Right, probably have Mr. Gloss out there marking everything. And then beyond that, you know, whatever amendments are required under the building code and the rules of the building department for amendments of building permits, because they are amended, but what's the paperwork? I don't know, Mr. Pelletier.
And then my second question is just, um, kind of a legitimate.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, yes.
Just, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I believe I'm in possession of a stamp, an as-built for foundation as constructed. So as, as long as that is accepted by the board, which would be in, in the form of a decision referencing it, then, then I don't need any additional paperwork for, for the setback, for the location of the foundation.
And that's certified by an architect or an engineer?
I, I believe in if it's not, I can, you know, I can email Gloss or Engineering, and he can, he can send it directly to me, but he, he did bring it to me personally in, in the office when he, when he did it.
Is that the December 7th plan?
I don't know. Does it have a stamp on it?
This one is not stamped that I have?
I, I don't, I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, that I think.
We'll get a stamp plan.
I don't think we have a stamped one, but that's what it was.
We'll get a stamp plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And then my other question was just on timing and logistics, on the withdrawal of the variance without prejudice, because part of the zoning is to give predictability to people who live in the zone, and what effect would that have on continuing with the construction and finishing the project if the, the withdrawal of the request for the variance would be requested, but the, the underlying non-conformity would continue?
I expect that we would be instructed by Mr. Pelletier to not having any relief that allows it to start demolition or removal of those, unless we can come up with some reason why they could be allowed. But I, I haven't thought of that reason yet, otherwise I would have been submitting it to you tonight. So I, I just don't want there to be a negative ruling against them on that. So if we withdraw, we're back to where we were, where he's telling us, you've got to get rid of that, it's in violation, and you can't, can't, I'm not going to give you a certificate of occupancy for a non-compliant building, so get rid of it, so you can finish the project and get a certificate of occupancy.
I'm wondering whether a negative determination perhaps would be helpful to you in any claims you're making against the person who built it this way?
He doesn't have anything.
I mean, yeah.
I, I've thought of that.
If there's no pocket there whatsoever, but.
I, I, I'm not going to speak too much about that, but I, I've thought of whether a negative determination gives us something more.
One second. Yes, sir.
I mean, they wouldn't have, there's no right to a variance, even if the conditions are there.
Mike, I know you guys are close to finishing on this, but just in kind of keeping an eye on time.
Yeah.
We need to wrap up.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, sure, what is, what do you have to say?
Well, I think Ms. Churchill's suggestion, we don't know there's anything, but as long as it doesn't affect any other aspect of the building, and I don't think it does, and I think Mr. Pelletier would agree, that the, the problem with the height is directly related to the dormers.
Yeah, I asked that question, so, yes, yeah.
So if we get rid of the dormers, if we don't have a height problem, we've got an expense problem.
Right. So if you want to just?
Maybe we'll withdraw the motion for withdrawal.
Okay.
If you can follow that.
Okay, so you want us to vote on both the matters, correct?
I think we were going to listen to, we heard one person.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay, so right now, no, okay, so I just want to go around one more time, I don't, in regards to where everyone is. We know where everyone is in the dormers. On the, this would be the first, from what we hear from Gary and Mark and Sarah, that this would be the first setback averaging. The structure is there. I don't like setback averaging, but it's there, and I believe Mr. Hearn's correct, we, although we do have an issue after the fact, but that's for another day. That is something that we could do if we so chose. Al, do you have any feelings on that, on the setback averaging?
I, I have nothing additional as to what I mentioned earlier that I, it's a, it's a screw-up and it can be fixed by us.
Yeah, yeah.
Rachel, anything on the setback?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's applicable. I think that if this came to us fresh before a building, that it would, you know, be consistent. The only question is the conformity question, but I think that's a distinct issue.
Right.
And, you know, I think there's some level of discretion here, that I would say this has no presidential effect to any future retroactive requests in any other property.
I agree, yeah. Thank you. Shannon?
No, and I think hearing more from Mr. Pelletier that it, you know, it is, we do have a discretion to approve this at this point. I don't love it, but given the hardship of the way the variance is likely going to go, and the fact that moving a foundation would be challenging, and that there is language in the bylaws that would potentially allow this by right. Yeah, I'm feeling that.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with my peers on the setback averaging, where we have the ability to provide that relief here, and not the greatest circumstances for it to come here, but understanding applies here.
Okay, Shannon, do you have anything?
No, just, it sounds like a reasonable use.
Okay. Mr. Hearn, I'm going to make a mo, ask for a motion to close the public hearing, okay? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
It's moved.
It's moved by Al, seconded by Rachel. Al?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Okay, yes, the public hearing is closed. What are the wishes of the board? The first thing I think before us is appeal of the building commissioner's decision. We can either uphold it, or we can override the decision of the building commissioner. If we override it, I would suggest that we have the applicant submit a stamp-certified as-built plan in regards to the location of the house on the lot. Is there a motion either to deny, either appeal, I mean, excuse me, enforce the decision of the building inspector or override it?
Mr. Chair, specifically the decision of the building inspector with respect to the front setback?
Correct, yeah, correct.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay, there's been a motion made to override the decision of the building inspector. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mary Kay. Now, do we have to cite any of the zoning bylaw, Sarah, Miss Regard?
I think you've.
Yeah, we've covered it, okay. So there's been a motion to override the decision of the building inspector, and it's been moved in second. Al?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mary Kay?
Yes.
And I, also, Chairman also votes yes, so that has been overridden. Gary, I hope you're not going to be mad at us, but. And the next one is now, is regarding the variance for the dormers. We know that, I think many of the members have made the findings that it does not meet the criteria regarding soil condition, sha, oh, there was no evidence before us regarding the soil conditions, the shape of typography, or the structures affecting the land of structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district which is located. Is there a motion either to approve this variance or to deny this variance?
So move to deny the variance related to the height.
Okay, there's been a motion made to deny the variance. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rachel. Mary Kay?
So a yes vote to deny?
Yes vote to deny, correct.
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
And the chairperson votes yes. So that variance has been denied. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. The next case before us is case 24-061223 Washington Street. This is a comprehensive permit request. I will read the public record. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town in Norwood will hold a public hearing on February 6, 2024 at 7:00 PM, on the request of MPG Realty Capital LLC with respect to property located at 1223 Washington Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, in the general business zoning district. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. It will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Law Chapter 40B, Section 20-23, to allow the construction of eight-unit multi-family residential building in the subject property of 1223 Washington Street. Any zoning relief that may be required in reference to Norwood zoning by law in the Massachusetts General Law shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make the views known to the board. Plans are on file with the application, the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals, that may be requested by emailing con@norwoodma.gov Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Good evening, Mr. Hearn.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. David Hearn Jr., on behalf of the applicant, MPG Realty Capital LLC. With me is Matt McDonald, one of the principals of that organization. And this is, as you mentioned, a request for a comprehensive permit with respect to the property of 1223 Washington Street in Norwood. Some of you may remember that about 22 months ago, we were before you with respect to this property. Mr. McDonald had proposed initially to build a three-story, 12-unit resident multi-family building on this site, which is a vacant lot that is at the corner of Washington Street and Concord Avenue. Our proposal started out at, I think, actually, there was even more in a prior life, but before, when we came before you, you were presented with a 12-unit application. We ended up, in the course of discussions, hearing from some of the neighbors, hearing from board members and others, we scaled it back to an eight-unit plan. And it is going to be 25% affordable at the suggestion, I think, of Mr. Sheehan. We made one of the units handicap accessible, and that unit, it will be on the first floor of the property. Another unit, that will be affordable, and the, another unit in the building will be an affordable unit. So when we were before you in 2022, the board voted five to nothing to approve the special permits with respect to the use of the property. That is, you know, this is not a matter as of right. You can't, multi-family, anywhere in the town really requires special permit approval. The board voted five to nothing for that, and five to nothing for relief with respect to the width of the parking lot aisle. That's a special permit matter. We couldn't get over the hump on the question of the variance relief that was needed with respect to density, and also with respect to floor area ratio. We're proposing floor area ratio of .68, where the maximum allowable under our bylaw is .50. With respect to density, we were proposing eight units on a piece of land that's 11,964 square feet, something like that. And if you took the dimensional requirements for that property set forth in our bylaw, you could build a single-family home. And obviously, eight units is a great deal more density than that. But a single-family home is not really what would fit in on that section of Washington Street. It doesn't really solve the need in any meaningful way for more housing in our community, and we wouldn't be doing it necessarily as an affordable housing project. So after a hiatus on this, we, and after discussions with the planning department, and with the selectmen and others in Town Hall, we came back with a, what's called the LIP program, Friendly 40B. And that's one where it's not being so much forced upon the town, because the town does have safe harbor under the 1.5% rule that applies. But this idea of a, of the LIP program recognizes in part that the, there are times when a town may want to allow or support this type of project because it's good for the town, meeting various needs of the town. So we went before the selectmen some months ago. It's necessary that we get the support of the executive authority in the town, and we did that some months ago. And the selectmen voted to support the proposal. It was then submitted to the Commonwealth, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, as it's called now. And it had been submitted to, those folks, they reviewed it, and we got a project eligibility letter, which I think is part of the package that was filed with you. Now we're back here, and when we're dealing with a comprehensive permit, the board sits as a board wearing multiple hats. It's comprehensive in that the relief that you may grant covers various things that might otherwise be covered, say, by the planning board. You know, if we, if we had gone, if we had succeeded in getting the relief we needed a couple of years ago, we would have had to move on to the planning board for site plan review because of the type of project it is. And in this proceeding, we're dealing with the, all the issues in, in one fell swoop. Now, those rules don't cover things like the Board of Health, if there were septic systems involved, but we're on municipal sewer, so none of them issue. And it doesn't cover Conservation Commission issues if there were wetlands, but there are no wetlands. So this is a project that will be decided, and hopefully favorably, by this board. And what you have, when you have one of these projects before you, is you are basically given the authority under Sec, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23, which are the comprehensive permit law. You're given authority to overrule some of the limitations that apply normally under the zoning bylaw. For example, with respect to density and floor area ratio, those are the two things that we could not get past the last time we were here. And so you have to look at, you have to make some findings here about, and, and you don't have to go into the type of detail or the type of findings that you have, say, with the variance. You have to look at the question of whether, you know, how the town is doing on providing affordable housing. And I've said before, we've met the requirement of the state with at the one and a half percent of our town's total land area being devoted to affordable housing. But there's still a need for this, a real need, and we've heard about that time and time again, from the planning department, the selectmen, and other people around town. So you would not, you know, if somebody came in with a flat-out 40B, not a, not a friendly 40B, you could probably turn them down, double the one and a half percent. But the idea of a friendly 40B is the executive authority of the town, the selectmen has decided, well, this is a good idea, we're going to support this, subject to this board's approval. And there are often, there's often more collaboration between the town and, and the developer in these projects. In a way, we've gone through a lot of that because we started out at 12, we cut it back to eight units, we agreed to put in a handicap accessible unit already. The project that's before you, I think, is not entirely the same, pretty much, the layout of the building, the units.
Some very, some very minor updates.
Couple of minor changes, but nothing of substance with respect to what we were before you on, in, in 2022. Granted, there was, Ms. Churchill wasn't on the board at that time, so I don't want to presume too much because you weren't there to hear it the first time. I may bore the others with repeating everything from 2022. But this is, as I said, vacant lot, it's been vacant for a long time, it's owned by the Abdallah family and my friend Helen Donnie, who was here. Her family's owned it for some time, and they'd like to see it developed. It is at the corner of Concord Ave. Anybody who's driven there has seen it. It, it's been used by folks for parking. How many of them are authorized, I don't know, but every time I go by, there, there's several cars parked on the Concord Ave side. And it's really crying out for something to be done with it. It's a piece of property that needs to be developed. So you can look at it as this is your opportunity to help with respect to housing, including affordable housing at 25% of this project. Does it address local concerns? Well, I would submit that it Well, I would submit that it addresses the concerns that we have in this town for more housing, and housing that will be located on the bus line, convenient to local stores and businesses, and for folks, working folks. This isn't some luxury apartment building that's being proposed, it's going to be market rate for 75% of the units and affordable for the others, the two that I've already mentioned. Is it going to have a negative effect on the neighborhood? Some might say, well, it's going to have an effect, more traffic, because there's more traffic likely to be when you get eight apartments than what's there now. But if you look at that neighborhood, there are a lot of buildings around that have multiple units, three, four, six, sometimes more units around in some of those buildings. This would fit in, it's on the main street, it's not going to create a lot of traffic. Eight units, the residents of eight units are not going to generate that much traffic in the case of today. And they'll come out onto Concord Ave rather than exiting onto busy Washington Street, they'll come out Concord Ave, where traffic comes out anyway, and people are used to traffic coming out there. So we've given you the application, we've given you the supporting data in terms of the project eligibility letter. We wouldn't have that without the support of the selectmen and the support of the Commonwealth. And what we're looking for in terms of these specific waivers or relief are four things, as I see it. One is to allow a multifamily dwelling, that's Section 3.1.5A4. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I might distribute this.
Yep.
I did type up the, what I think are...
Save me from writing it all down.
No, that's right, you don't have to write it all down.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
All right, so the first one has to do with allowing multifamily dwelling in the general business zoning district, which is what we're in. The next one is the proposed floor area ratio of .68, where .5 is the normal maximum. The third one, Section 4.1.2, density of eight units on a lot having 11,964 square feet. If you were to put eight, if you wanted to do this as a matter of right, at least as far as density goes, not as far as the use, but as density, you'd need 25,645 square feet. 2,235 square feet, I think, is the number per unit after the first unit, 10,000 square feet, the first one. Nobody has a lot that size available in that district, maybe not too many places in the town. And the last one is one, 6.1.10, parking aisle width of 25 feet with 26 feet is required. The first and the fourth are the ones that were actually passed unanimously two years ago. The two, the second and third ones are the ones that we stumbled over, just couldn't get the votes. I think we had three in support in the end, we needed a fourth, and that's what brought us here. I put the catch-all in together with such, any further relief the zoning board may determine to be appropriate. We had a question in our own minds about whether there was any height issue, because the design of the building calls for some towers at corners and so forth, but Mr. Pelletier and I exchanged correspondence on that, and he said, no problem at all with that, that fits in when we look at how we define building height anyway in the bylaw. So this is, as I said, a project that is, we think would be a very good one for this site, we think it satisfies all the different requirements. Environmentally, it's not going to create any serious problems, I don't think it's going to create any problems, other than you take a vacant lot, get rid of the grass, and put a structure there. There's adequate access, it's a corner lot, there will be adequate access for any fire trucks or ambulances to get in and out of the property. We have adequate parking for the residents, we're not looking for any relief with respect to that. I note that in a, we received comments from the planning department the other day regarding whether we want to, whether we can come in with a landscape architect's plan, we can certainly do that, to show some plantings and see what trees maybe can be preserved, I don't know, because this is a tight lot. And if you look at the plan, you'll see we don't have a lot of space outside of the parking area. We did create a place for putting snow when parking lot is plowed, that was a question, I think, the last time, what are you going to do with the snow? Please don't put it out on the street, and we won't. So all of these things, we think fit in, and I think Ms. Dixon had also raised the question whether we need to have Mr. Bryan review stormwater management, we can certainly take that up with him. We don't expect everything to get resolved instantly on this, but we received this memo yesterday, and we've been working with it and talking to our professionals, engineers and the architects about any questions that have come up. There was another question that was raised by the Fire Department today regarding the egress from the building. We've been talking to our architects about that, and Mr. Pelletier had asked a question about it, too, under the code. And we think we have the answer to that, but we want to make sure, and we expect them that between now and, say, the next time we meet with you, we would have a discussion with maybe Mr. Pelletier, Deputy Chief Cody, and anybody else who needs to be involved in that, to review those questions, make sure they're satisfied. Code compliance is not necessarily your concern, but we appreciate that the question is raised, and we'll see what we can do to get that resolved to everybody's satisfaction as much as it can be, I think it can be, though. And I, you know, this is, in terms of who the tenants would be, we're proposing two units for income-qualified households at 80% area median income. And that's quite common with being proposed these days. So I think that is the situation that we have before you. It's a good use of the property, it's a good, for the property, it's a good use, and for the town, we think this is a good use. Housing, affordable housing, located on the bus line, convenient for South Norwood stores and other businesses, I think it checks all the boxes. But we're happy to take any questions, and Matt's been working on this a long time, he's got a lot of experience in this, so if I don't have an answer, he must.
And I, you know, I just want to say, you know, thank you for that, David. Nothing sells the...
Just, Matt, quickly, name and address.
Oh, sorry, Matt McDonald, MGM Realty Capital, 1111 Robbins Highway here in Norwood. Very appreciative that the town's willing to work with us on this, and gives us a second opportunity to develop the site. I know many of you are familiar with it, and thank you for your consideration, we'd really love to get something done here.
Well, I'd like to thank you and Mr. Hearn and the Abdulla family for staying the course. I thought this was a good project, the 12 units, but a lot of developers would have walked away, and you folks all stayed committed, and I think it's a real good project. That being said, that being said, I'll open it up to the board members, if they have any questions, before we open it up to anyone in the public.
Yeah, I did have a question about the comments that came in relating to, like, the one stairway in the footprint, I guess, I'm curious to know if you think that you would be able to address that situation sort of within your footprint without messing with your program too much, because obviously you would eat away at, you know, some of the unit space or your other...
So we've raised the issue with the project architect, and, you know, his opinion is that it does comply with the code, that buildings of this type do permit a single meter egress, particularly given that it will be sprinklered. That being said, you know, we're going to really discuss that with him, discuss that with the town officials, see if there's anything else that needs to be done to get everybody comfortable with it.
Great. And then I guess this may be a question for Ms. Dixon, we got the letter from the state saying that the project is eligible, so we don't have to worry about anything. I saw that there was something about, like, three-bedroom units for families and that type of thing, if we've gotten the letter, we don't have to worry about anything about the program being acceptable.
That's right. So the application that went to the state before that PL was issued, included information about the floor plans, the unit bedroom count breakdown, included information about their marketing plan. As an affordable property, they're obligated to affirmatively further fair housing through their marketing plan for those affordable units, they provided that information, information about rents for those affordable units. It's a fairly comprehensive package.
Great, okay.
And so they did that, they also came out and they did a site visit, that Mr. McDonald and I, I met a representative from EOHLC to walk the site and look at the neighborhood. So that review is fairly, fairly thorough.
Great, awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I forgot to mention, thank you to the planning department for staying the course too on this.
I agree on that 100%, we've been working with Sarah and the rest of the department on that, and her predecessor, too, was in on it at the beginning.
Al, any comments?
At this time, I just want to let you know that I agreed with you, Mr. Chairman, that the last time around, I was in favor of this project as 12 units. I think they've done a great job, and as the term has been, you staying the course. I think it's excellent, not just for South Norwood, but for the town of Norwood. And that's what we're here looking for, for the betterment of the town of Norwood. Thank you.
Thank you. Churchill?
Yeah, you just, you mentioned looking into what trees could be saved, it would be good to know in particular, because there's some very large old trees there, so it'd be great to know which of those specifically can be...
We don't know yet.
Yeah.
We've got to look at that with the landscape architect, and there's one large tree that we think is actually maybe on the neighbor's property, or maybe partly on each, we don't know. You know, we plan to, this may be jumping ahead a little bit, but we expect we'll put some sort of fencing along, not necessarily, Scott Cave was mentioned, but I mean, some solid fencing, there'll be a tractor along the back, could provide privacy for the folks on the other side, and really to define the lot. But if you look at the plans, the space between the parking area and the boundary is not that great. So we don't know really which trees yet will get in the way of what we have to do, but we'll, you know, be putting some sort of plantings in there. And there was mention of street trees also, but there are actually a couple of street trees there now in front of the property. If we started adding more, we'd be running into an issue with having too many compared to the rest of the neighborhood, and also maybe affecting sightlines looking out onto Washington Street. But we'll look at all of that, and we'll have to have a landscape architect. The question hadn't been raised, and we hadn't thought of it, but it came in with the memo that we saw yesterday, and we'll look at it, we've had our internal discussion, get going on that, couldn't be done for tonight, but it can, you know, maybe we'll come back in a couple of, a few weeks.
Another question I had is water runoff and water retention, because obviously you're going from a vacant lot to a lot that has a very large percentage of impermeable surface between the structure and the parking lot. I didn't see anything in the packet that covered that.
No, there isn't anything at this point, we're going, and we're talking with our engineer about that, we'll be working on that and to discuss it with Mr. Ryan, since ultimately that falls into his department to review that.
So, and this is my first comprehensive permit, so that is one of the things that are outside of the comprehensive permit process, or...
No, no, it's within, and Ms. Dixon, I think, pointed out that those are things that, if we're looking at environmental issues, those are things that we want to look at. We didn't really discuss it in our prior discussions, and, you know, we look at the list of things, we've got to submit, it really wasn't in there, but at least, or maybe we missed it, I don't know, but it wasn't clearly called out from my point of view, but we will be having those discussions with our project engineer and Mr. Ryan, and include Ms. Dixon and her office, as they want to be included. Because we expect that on a couple of these issues, landscaping and the water, the stormwater and all that, that, you know, we need to do a little more work on that and then come back. These things are rarely decided in one night, as much as people might be enthusiastic, and as much as some of you have already seen us a few times here on this project. But we expect that at a continued date, maybe March...
March 4th, March 5th.
Is one.
So all those...
We'd have the responses on that, and we would have dealt with Mr. Ryan and on that, because he's, I mean, he's our in-house expert on that. And then he reports to you folks as to what, you know, one of the, the different agencies in the town get notice of this file. And instead of going through site plan review with the planning board, where we have department head meetings and all that, it's all compressed into this one proceeding.
Mr. Chair, can I speak to you?
Yes.
Yeah, so just a word on process, a lot of what's before you with these more technical details relating to the development of the lot, not the uses or the setbacks which are your standard operating territory as the ZBI, is usually handled by planning board and site plan review. It is part of the zoning approval. The zoning bylaw does have standards for landscaping, it does have standards for stormwater. There is a requirement that any new development meet the guidelines of the Mass. Stormwater Handbook, so the stormwater management system that's proposed will have to be in compliance with that. That is a review by the town engineer, and they would provide comment to the Board. And then your hearing is the process, is really the form for that process to work, where you can say, okay, well, our town engineer has said that this doesn't comply and suggests putting, you know, a larger pipe here or a retention basin over there, or whatever, and you work to formalize the plans to satisfy those concerns.
So we'll functionally, we'll be getting reports or submissions or, you know, what have you, from every department that would touch on this, and then we'll consolidate and make...
Exactly.
Okay, perfect.
So I think Attorney Hearn mentioned before, you know, code compliance isn't necessarily the purview of the ZBI, and he's right, but at the same time, having the review by the Fire Department and the Building Department in particular, they are reviewing with an eye to code, and that's important, because if there are violations that would, to your point, Shannon, that would result in a redesign, and you're being asked to approve specific plans, it's important to have that review done now. And so it does typically, you know, go over the course of a couple of hearings, we do a lot of work with applicants, you know, during the work week, to pass plans back and forth with department heads and various town departments. So typically, I think I mentioned in my memo, the landscaping plan is submitted as part of a site plan review, a photometric plan, which I don't think you typically see a lot of, kind of reviewing the lighting installations on the property, the zoning bylaw does have requirements for lighting, so we'd want to make sure that that complies. And basically, just kind of all of these protections to not only ensure compliance with the various requirements that are scattered throughout the 270 pages of the bylaw, but also just generally protecting those local concerns. And that is one of the three finding categories in the comprehensive permit, just to tie it back to your review. You know, the first being the statement on your 40B compliance, the second being, does it address all of these local concerns, and then does it meet the local needs, is the last one. So that'll all be incorporated as findings into your decision, and any conditions of approval would relate to that second category.
Thank you, Sarah. That was very comprehensive.
And then, just one more question, and obviously I haven't had the benefit of thinking about this the last couple of years, but, you know, that zoning district has a zero setback. The residential, the strictly residential properties, I think, all have setbacks, the ones that are multi-use have no setback, and I noticed that the bedrooms are really right on the sidewalk of Washington Street, which, from a zoning perspective, is fine, but what are you doing as far as screening or anything like that with those bedrooms, almost all of them being on a street? Or maybe that's just a market thing that you've determined is not an issue.
Well, that's, I mean, I'll leave it to Matt in terms of the furnishings within the units, you know, I think what's going to be built, but there are a lot of residential properties along Washington Street that actually are right up, some of them are a mix, you have some commercial...
Yeah, with the mix, the commercial...
But you have some that have really residential from ground up, right on the, you know, that neighborhood, it doesn't allow for front yards, really, with the existing stuff, and this lot does not really allow for any real front yard. If you had it, you wouldn't have the parking, or you wouldn't have green space in back. And not that there's a lot of that either, just because of the size of less than 12,000 square feet. But Matt, in terms of your experience with other properties and all, and bedrooms being up against streets and all that.
Yeah, and we anticipate that the fourth-floor units are, you know, the fact that they are first-floor units is actually a draw to certain tenant groups, given that you can access it...
Yeah, accessibility.
Very easily. In terms of ensuring that there is adequate privacy in the bedrooms, I think appropriate window coverings will solve that issue.
Yeah, perfect, thank you. I was just curious, because it's the bedrooms right on the street, I was wondering what you were doing with that, but certainly not a zoning relief thing, because it's a zero setback in that district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, nothing else. Nope, nothing else.
Oh, Shannon, sorry.
Mary Kay was-
Mary Kay, yeah, Mary Kay.
Excuse me, yes.
I know you had already spoken about this, Mary Kay. Yes, Mary Kay, go ahead.
Excuse me, I think you had said this already, but fundamentally, the programming for the building is still similar to what had been previously presented. No dramatic changes.
Yeah.
And then I-
Changed the dates, I think. And there was some of the update last week on-
E V parking.
E V parking, yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, I think some, I think ensuring that the accessible unit, you know, met the appropriate requirements for an accessible unit, but in terms of the unit mix, yeah.
And then my other questions were related to documentation that we already covered.
Great, thank you. Dan, anything?
No, nothing.
Yeah, okay. I'll just incorporate, you know, I think it's a good project. I've already said that. As you know, we're not voting on this. We're going to, we're going to continue this hearing to March 4th and I would just ask the, well, Gary, I know you sent a letter. I'm just going to have the applicant reference your letter and the letter from the planning department to take forward and do all of the things we're looking for in regards to Mr. Ryan and the Fire Department and the building inspector. So I'm just going to advise you to do that, which I think you've already received. And then we'll, we'll continue the hearing to March 5th.
That makes sense.
But we still have to ask for the public tonight, so. So Gary, you good with that? We'll just reference your letter. Do you want to comment on it all?
No, I think it's going to be interesting. Again, I think Sarah hit the nail on the head that, you know, one of the reasons that we do this preliminary plan review is to make sure that when it comes time for permitting, building permitting, Fire Department permitting, that we don't run into a compliance issue that requires a redesign, which then would send us all back to this board for a modification. So, and we also want to make sure that what we're, you know, what your board is approving is safe and compliant.
Great, thank you, Gary. Sarah, do you have anything to add other than the review that you had sent as part of the record?
I did make a couple of recommendations in the review. And it sounds like a lot of the conversation will be dependent on your review with your landscape architect. I did recommend swapping out the chain link fence around the dumpster to the solid-
Yeah, I'm just going to, I'm just going to reference that whole thing to him.
I would say if there's any of those recommendations that you as a board don't feel are necessary, it might be helpful for the applicant to receive that guidance now as they work to incorporate there.
I certainly have no issues with a sort of solid fence around the dumpster. Improved things that, so alone with a solid fence around the property lot.
I'll have another whack at it, Mike. So what's interesting is I remember when we had this first meeting, we had about eight or 10 people who were against it and now there's no one here other than the applicant and I am going to go there, but there's no one here. So there's no one here present unless, I'm sorry, Helen, did you want to speak on it? And you don't have to get up, Helen, just we, Helen Donahue is the owner of the property. She's going to speak on it. You're fine right there, Helen. You're fine right there.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm Helen Donahue, town leading representative from District Six for more than 50 years. So originally I wasn't planning to say anything, but first of all, I want to say thank you for all these years of work that you've tried to help out with this project to make it something that would be better and good for South Norwood. In regard to the complete, the comments tonight, the first comment about the question about the stairs, the building is two floors of housing, floor on the first floor, floor on the second floor. So all of the people on the ground level won't be using the stairs more likely unless they're going to see their friends upstairs. So that's, that's one respect. The second question was about the water runoff. All of that, as the town planner has indicated and as you members know, all of that has to be addressed within the requirements of the comprehensive information. And that our engineer and the town engineer will work together on that to make it final. One thing that happened two years ago, I was on the board as selectman and I didn't want to come to the meeting and not to interfere. I'm off now, so I'm interfering. And, but what I'm trying to say is that the information is so important two years ago we didn't bring up. And that was that in regard to the density, if that building was proposed uptown, it would have complied with the overlay district. And we want South Norwood to be treated in the same great way that uptown is too. And the third thing, the new thing, is that all of that new zoning about near the train station and stuff, this, this zoning is much, much, this, this density provides much more access, square footage per unit than all that other new stuff does. So this is our chance to save part of good housing in South Norwood. Thank you very much for all the help.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. And thank you, your 52 years in town meeting and all your time as selectman. Is there anyone here at GoToMeeting that would like to speak to this matter? Anyone here at GoToMeeting that would like to speak to this matter? Okay, thank you. So we're going to vote to continue it and just the motion would be to continue it and ask that the applicant review all of the comments provided by our community development office and also the comments from the building inspector and come back to us in March 5th addressing those issues with new plans that hopefully we can move forward and vote on this.
We expect everybody to work on that very soon and thank you for that. And we agree, a continuance to March 5th makes a lot of sense.
Okay. Is there a motion to continue this public hearing for the comprehensive plan for 1223 Washington Street? And move-
Second.
Lay out, seconded by Mary Kay, Mary Kay?
Mr. Chairman, wait a minute.
Yep. Oh, no.
Date time in place.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Seven o'clock, March 5th, Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street.
Someone said March 4th?
March 5th. March 5th, yeah. And it'll also be available, GoToMeeting.
Google, Google Meet.
Google Meet. Google Meet. Seconded by Mary Kay. Mary Kay on the motion?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and it's been continued to March 5th at the Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street at 7:00 PM. And this will be first on the docket. Helen will be first on the docket, sorry. It's a long, a long night for everybody. Okay, I think we have some meeting minutes. I have reviewed them. I did not see anything stand out on my behalf, but are any of the other members have any comments on the meeting minutes for December 5th, 2023?
No comments, Mr. Chair?
No comments.
Okay, so a motion to approve the meeting minutes of December 5th, 2023?
So moved.
Moved by Shannon, seconded by Al. Al?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mary Kay?
Yes.
Yes. And the meeting minutes, which was our shortest meeting ever in the lifetime-
Bring back Holly.
Of January 2nd, 2024. There's no comments in the meeting, we'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
I do have just one clarification that I sent to Lynn. I think it got in the updated packet.
It did.
Okay.
So we'll continue that, those meeting minutes till the next meeting.
I think it was in the packet beforehand.
Oh, was it? Okay.
It was just clarifying that the approval identified the specific plans as to convention and location.
Okay, I didn't see it a little bit, but okay.
Was that the highlighted section?
I think so.
I don't know. It was in the, it was in the motion itself. I don't, I didn't see it highlighted.
Typically, when Lynn makes those changes, she'll highlight it.
She'll highlight it.
Okay. So the meeting minutes as amended, January 2nd, 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Shannon, seconded by Rachel. Al?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mary Kay?
Yes.
Any other business before us?
Just a reminder, there is a second meeting scheduled for this month to handle volume. That'll be on 27th. Same place, usual time.
Yeah, our next meeting's February 27th. They will have March 5th right after that. Same place, same time. Okay.
Thanks for all your-
Yeah, is there a motion to adjourn? Made by Mary Kay, seconded by Shannon. Mary Kay?